Colorado for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We have three items on our action, on our agenda tonight. We're going to item number one is a subdivision review requirements. Item number two is deed restricted affordable housing parking requirements. And item number three is an update on zoning requirements for childcare facilities. We'll start our meeting as we usually do with the public comment. You may come and speak to the council for any item that is on the agenda, any of those three agenda items for three minutes under our public's right to speak. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but if you are online, please raise your hand and we'll bring you into the meeting. And if you're here in council chambers and haven't signed up, but would like to speak, you may do so now. I don't see anybody coming to the podium to speak now, and I'll ask the clerk if we've got anybody raising their hand online.
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we will move past our public's right to speak and go to agenda item number one. This is subdivision review requirements. Mr. Goff.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are kind of on round two here of the Lauren and Scott show. They've been seeing a lot of them recently, so.
All right.
And yeah, great, but I've, you know, hopefully you read the memos. They're actually pretty interesting to read if you're a government geek. So Scott does a great job and Lauren of writing these. So three items tonight that that we discussed several weeks ago. And so as the first, as you said, the first one is subdivision review requirements. Lauren or Scott right away?
Turn it over to Scott. Before we go to commercial.
Go ahead. All right, thanks, Council. Yeah, so the first topic is subdivision review requirements. We presented a little bit on this on February sixth, and at that time, Council recommended coming back to study session to discuss more requirements. I'm going to try to get really close to the mic. So this memo that I provided provides a summary of the items that could constitute an ordinance, and tonight we're really asking for consensus on either staff's recommendation or another path forward. So getting into it, the subdivision review procedures of the city, we have found are really out of alignment with other cities in the metro area and even more so nationwide. Wheat Ridge is a rarity in that subdivisions often are required to go to public hearings at city council and planning commission, and it's based on a really small number of lots. So at February's study session, Council generally agreed with staff's conclusions that the current requirements are flawed, mainly because we're asking for public engagement and feedback when comments cannot impact a decision. So just a quick recap, subdivisions are created for uses or developments which are already permitted on the property. And so seeking input on subdivisions is confusing when the proposed use or development is already allowed on that property. And it, they create the impression that the proposed use or site plan is up for debate when really subdivisions are ministerial action. So public input is really necessary when we're doing discretionary decisions, things like guiding documents, long range planning documents, rezonings, planned developments, variances, special use permits, things that are kind of up for debate. But subdivisions are not changing anything that's allowed on the property, and they're designed to comply with the underlying zoning. So and that, that means it's a ministerial action. We do have a lot of lessons learned from some of our public engagement efforts, and Council and staff have increasingly prioritized meaningful public engagement and clear public information in keeping with national trends and practices. So in two thousand and twenty-one, the strategic planning retreat, Council identified new efforts of community engagement. Part of that was the launching of the Let's Talk program. And city staff established the community involvement task force, and that whole document is attached. But essentially, there's three types of involvement: informing, consulting, and involving. So a public hearing is really considered consulting the public because we're asking for input. And the promise made to the community when consulting is that the community's comments and feedbacks will be considered in the decision-making process, and it's best deployed when something like a zoning is up for debate. But from the public standpoint, having public hearings for subdivisions can often create division, confusion, or even mistrust. And from a developer standpoint, public hearings for subdivisions introduce uncertainty and are inconsistent with other communities. And then from staff's standpoint, we undermine public trust and expend a lot of resources, requiring public hearings for subdivisions that are already essentially approvable under the zoning. So that was a little bit more information than I provided the last time, and I just wanted to give a little bit of update on peer communities and what other communities are doing as well. Wheat Ridge subdivision requirements are really unique, and that is city council reviews a large portion of the subdivisions that the staff reviews, generally with the exception of right-of-way vacations. Nearby peer communities have reduced public hearing requirements, and many do not have any at all. So in the memo, there is a list of communities that have no public hearing requirements at all. National level, same thing, public hearings are used pretty sparingly, and many have no public hearing requirements at all. One of the things that we took away from a recent presentation by the APA, American Planning Association, was the new Equity and Zoning Policy Guide, which I referenced, I think, in all three of the documents tonight. And they really recommend that public hearings should only be required when there's a need to use discretion in applying zoning criteria and standards. And in the case of subdivision applications, there's not discretion because it either meets the requirements or it doesn't. So with all that being said, we are recommending some pretty big changes to our public hearing requirements for subdivisions. And instead of relying on public hearings, staff is recommending new ways to inform the public about subdivision applications. So we have three main recommendations tonight. Really, the first two are the big ones, the third is kind of a backup plan, I guess. But the first one is to remove public hearing requirements for subdivision plats with some exceptions, and one is when a variance is requested. Variances are up for debate, there is an actual list of discretionary criteria for variances, and that's something that already goes to public hearings in Wheat Ridge. So we're not proposing to change that, with the exception that Planning Commission would review that instead of City Council. City Council is really not, in the same way, equipped to review these types of applications. And if variances go forward kind of in other cities, it is a Planning Commission that reviews them. And the other one is when city right-of-way is being vacated. This is pretty much the case nationwide, where city council gets to review right-of-way vacations. It's a city asset that we're giving up, and that's something that we would recommend keeping in place. The second recommendation goes along with that, which is, in lieu of public hearings, requiring public notice of subdivision approval for subdivisions over a certain size, and that's the informing the public that we talked about. So we're recommending a six-hundred-foot letter notice, and that's the same as we do for public hearings. Generally covers the distance of about one to two blocks, and it's consistent with the community involvement strategy. I did provide a sample letter in the memo, and it's really meant to provide the community with balanced, accurate, and objective information, meant to inform and educate. It would use layman's terms to describe a project, the zoning, why it was approved, and things like next steps, construction hours. We want all the information in the memo. One of the things I would like to get a little bit more consensus on tonight is when we would be issuing public notice. Right now, we're only requiring public notice for minor subdivisions that go to Planning Commission and major subdivisions. But we felt that basing the subdivision review requirements on the number of lots is really arbitrary, when it really should be based on the size of the property, because that could be potentially more impactful. So we had two ideas. One was to base the threshold of notice on a ten-acre site, and that's the city threshold we already use for when we require concepts, plans, and mixed-use development. That recognizes that development on large ten-acre sites is visible and can have real impacts on neighbors that they should really be informed. And then another threshold option is two acres, which is about the size of half of a block in Wheat Ridge, and is more typical of infill development. This would impact a lot more sites. We see a lot of subdivisions around that criteria, as there are really not that many sites over ten acres left in Wheat Ridge. We don't want to recommend these notice requirements to things like lot line adjustments, where nothing's really being created, it's just a property line shifting, or things like a consolidation plat which doesn't result in new development. The other update we have is that we are continuing more forward progress on creating that interactive development map. Lauren can explain a little bit more about that. It was stalled by the cybersecurity incident, but we're back on track. And I know Lauren met with GIS today, so maybe has a little bit of an update there as well. And then recommendation number three is removing language regarding how the number of lots in a subdivision are determined. Right now, we say "involved," and we really should be saying "created." Involved kind of implies, you know, you might be starting from a larger number and going to a smaller number, but that recommendation is moot if we go forward with recommendations one and two. So we are seeking direction. I'm sure you guys will have some questions, so I'm here for that. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Questions from Council? Senator, Senator, yeah. Counselor, Counselor Hulteen, everybody looks, looks bigger and better tonight, so.
Thank you. Just one question, can you give an example of a variance, types of variances we might encounter that would fall under the recommendation one?
It's really rare that we would see a subdivision variance. It's really rare generally that we see variance applications, particularly for a subdivision for new development. They're really operating under the presumption that they have to meet the requirement. So the barrier to essentially applying for a variance is really high. There might be a case, I'm trying to think of like.
I think the last one we did was maybe eight years ago. We don't do a variance for lot size because that affects density, but we have very rarely processed a variance for lot width, usually when we're trying to accommodate like an existing structure and carve off a portion of the undeveloped land. So like Scott said, the barrier is very high. We tell people like, you know, if you can't meet the lot with standards, then it's probably not appropriate to subdivide, you'd have to explore a zone change. But that, it happened at Thirty-second and Pierce, where they were saving the old farmhouse and creating the two lots next to it. It exceeded the lot area, but it had a couple of feet shy of lot width. Thank you.
And would that include like a side yard setback on an existing structure?
Usually because the subdivision show, doesn't show the building location, it's usually not a setback. We can sort of predict if it would need a setback variance, but usually with the plat, it's going to be a variance from the lot width. I can't actually think of another potential variance.
It's really rare, just the criteria in the code to have a subdivision variance is, makes it essentially impossible. I think on purpose, because we don't want to have people trying to negotiate zoning with us. The zoning is the zoning.
Okay, additional questions? Counselor Hoppe.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. This has long been kind of a thorn in my side, that when we have, when we are looking at subdivision plats, and, and it just feels disingenuine to have the community come and give us their comment, knowing that it's already reached all of the thresholds and that, you know, without trying to get us into any sort of legal bad waters, you know, we have to approve it. And so I, to me, I think this is absolutely the way to go. I don't think it's fair to say, come, give us comment, but actually, we can't do anything about it. And, and I, and I support recommendation one and two. I'd support the, the variances going to Planning Commission. We appoint Planning Commission as City Council, and so if we don't trust the people we're appointing, then we need to look at ourselves and, and do a better job of getting people on Planning Commission.
Oh, and then also, I do think that the, I think we should go by two acres rather than ten. We really don't, what we'll have in our community may be smaller infill development, and ten acres is not, you know, there's very few rare opportunities for there to be a ten-acre community.
Thank you, Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Having served on the Planning Commission for many years, I can tell you that it's been, it has been frustrating. When the public comes in, they think they actually have an opportunity to ask questions and change things, and even Planning Commission members have the same issue of like, what, you know, what can we do? And it's, it's really nothing. This is a subdivision, and, and staff has to spend a lot of time just informing the Planning Commission, like, this is what you can do, which is great, but I think this, I think this is good. I, I'm full supporter of the, the recommendations. And also of the two acre, because we were just pretty small, and so having something smaller, and I, you know, I, I'm not sure how you came on the two acre. My opinion is just something small, you know, and so if staff felt two acres, that's the one, then that's the one. But if you want some flexibility, then write some flexibility into that, that two acres, whatever you think the threshold is, if it's a certain density, or if it's purely acreage of, of where you, where you get that, that triggers. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Saitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Mr. Ohm and Ms. Hoppe. I, I said it a few weeks ago, but it really is frustrating for people to come in, and I know that was especially Thirty-second and Kipling, and the Judy Townhomes too, on Thirty-eighth. Both of them, there was a lot of divisive comments on, you know, both sides, but, you know, there was only one way to vote. And, and we can't have a conversation with them because it's quasi-judicial. So, so we can't even inform the public why we can't inform the public. So, this is silly. So I, I really think that we should move forward. I, I agree, moving forward with the Planning Commission looking at the variances, and I think the two acres is the, probably the right number, because that's, that's what we'll have. So I see no problem with that, so I'd move forward with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wow, I seem louder than everyone else who's spoken so far. Okay, should I back up from? I just agree with my three colleagues, and I just want to echo Mr. Ohm's comments from spending many years on Planning Commission. It's, it's frustrating on the dais, it's frustrating for people to come in, and so I think these are all very good moves. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Noslerbeck.
Thanks, I agree with everything that's been said as well, and also just want to apologize for being a little late. I was trying to get my car to charge, and it wouldn't get on the charger. So I'm here and apologize, but wanted to also say, just as a counselor who was on the dais and kind of learning as we were going, these things coming to us, and, you know, it was hard to not make decisions about these things, but they actually, we didn't really have the power to do that, and there's a ton of confusion out there, even amongst us as counselors, when we see this, this stuff coming to us. And so I just am in support of this, basically in a, in a transparency and clarification way with our community. And I just would encourage, this is the way things have been done for as long as we've known, and I think that, you know, with all of the great ways that we've been communicating with our community recently, in the past few years, I think it'd be great if we could do a how-to, participate with the Planning Commission, and make sure that voices are still heard as we're making these, these edits. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions? Counselor Hulteen.
Thank you. I'm just chiming in that I agree with my peers. I support removing it coming in front of council, except for the recommendation in suggestion one. And then I also support the two acre threshold for notice. One thing that just kind of dawns on me, and this is just a little bit of nuance, let's just assume I'm the version of me that moved here in two thousand and twelve and not today. The, the notice letter, I like it, it's still a little, it's not quite plain language enough for me. And I think, including if we've got anywhere on our website that like refers people to, you know, take a look and learn about zoning or whatever, because this may be the first thing someone gets. And again, looking at the, the recommendations, and I really like seeing the outline on our community engagement strategies, the letter does seem to invite a little bit around like, oh, I might care about this. And I do like that it's saying, hey, you should expect construction in these hours, but it's, it's a little bit still kind of explaining this regulatory environment and not as inviting into the civic process of awareness instead of engagement. So my only recommendation would maybe, maybe to plain language the letter a little bit and include some resources for citizens who are more curious to learn about this, so that they, they know what to do with it.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you. So I have a question for staff. Do you know offhand how many communities continue to bring subdivisions to council? Like just?
It's pretty rare. I think there are some communities that have some thresholds where they would go to council, but they're often tied to things like rezoning. So that's something that would already go to council in Wheat Ridge, so having like a separate subdivision doesn't really seem to make a lot of sense, at least with our process. There are some limited communities that do have public hearings that go to Planning Commission or council. Those definitely are in the minority and tend to be communities that have a lot of council control. Golden is one example, although they've exempted townhomes from their subdivision process, so there's still things that are less restrictive than Wheat Ridge. But I, the vast majority in Colorado have almost no council involvement with subdivisions.
And so this new process would, if there were a rezoning and a subdivision, would it be rolled into the vote at council, or would it be treated as a completely separate issue? So then we, we would see the rezoning, and then the subdivision would, would go to an administrative review?
Right, you would see the rezoning. In some cases, like a planned development, you would see the planned development as well. So think about Clear Creek Crossing, where you saw like the different development areas and where access would go. So that kind of gives you an idea of where the lot lines would go for a subdivision. But yeah, like Clear Creek Crossing, Lutheran's probably another example, is where you're going to have a, a big planning document, you're probably going to have multiple rezonings, so there will still be council involvement to that extent.
Okay, I just wanted to thank you for bringing this back and giving us a clearer picture as to what it would look like, you know, just allowing it to no longer be a, a council directive, I think, you know, from the dais. And if we're allowed to vote no, we should be able to. And I think that, I echo some of the comments that have been said by my fellow council members, as, as in, it gives, it gives the public, you know, a, an expectation that they, that they could have a say in it and without us having legal repercussions. So I just appreciate you understanding and bringing broader awareness to this issue. Appreciate it.
Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I do support the recommendation one and two and the two acres. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm just going to ask everyone to raise their hand. If we have consensus to move forward on recommendation number one with parts A and B, Odie, do you have another question?
Sorry, and if this is too much of opening a different can of worms, I'm totally happy to defer this, but one of the things when I was reading it with the DEI recommendations that are within it, I'm just curious, like, what are we doing around language justice for notification of neighbors? And, and or do we have GIS data of, you know, like areas of our community where we have a higher, like, Spanish is a first, like, primary language? How are we managing that kind of stuff for our communications?
It's a good question. We don't have GIS data in terms of language spoken in the household, but we were talking the other day about how our Let's Talk postcards have a little blurb that says, that sort of essentially, if you speak Spanish, call this number, and we don't have that on our legal notice letters than we need to, and we can definitely add that.
Okay, I was gonna, yeah, I was just gonna say, like, have something like that or refer to a website where we've got this in Spanish as well. Thank you.
Great point, sorry. So hands for support on recommendation one with the part A and B. Recommendation number two, using two acres, we have that, and then you don't need number three, right? Okay. Anything else on that item we need to dispatch?
Can I, can I just, there, there were some, some comments around adding, like, some, you know, extra education around like the change and why into some places on our website or something like that, and then also some, some, also something in the letter about perhaps some guidance somewhere if you'd like to find out more about zoning. And so I was just wondering if we could get a consensus to, to move forward with those pieces too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number two, these are deed restricted affordable housing parking requirements.
Scott again? Yep, Scott. All right, just finished right in my last thought there. All right, so this is a different topic. We also talked about on February sixth, where City Council gave us direction to return with more information regarding recommended updates to parking requirements for deed restricted affordable dwelling units to align with recommendations in the affordable housing strategy. And since then, this memo has additional research to accompany the recommendations at the direction of City Council. So we wanted to take a bit of a deeper dive into some of the parking utilization rates of deed restricted affordable housing. The first recommendation in the affordable housing strategy that is moving forward to council, I believe on May eighth, is the Parkland Fee Reduction. Planning Commission unanimously recommended that that get approved, so you will see that pretty soon. And then this is the second on the list. So they do follow recommendations within the adopted affordable housing strategy to reduce minimum parking requirements for deed restricted affordable housing, specifically in mixed-use zones, transit-oriented developments, and some other high-density residential zoning. And this also, again, aligns with recommendations from the American Planning Association, which in two thousand and twenty-two adopted the Equity and Zoning Policy Guide. So below, I did provide some quotes from the policy guide, which does recommend to reduce or remove parking requirements for affordable housing. And specifically, this is deed restricted affordable housing. This is not market-rate housing. This wouldn't apply to a market-rate development or even workforce. This is deed restricted based on income below a certain AMI, area median income. And the adopted Affordable Housing Strategy also has a direct quote that's saying, that says, "Parking represents a development cost, and as, and in areas exempted from the charter's limits on density, parking can be an inefficient use of land that reduces a project's capacity to lower land cost per unit." So when staff was reviewing the Ives Building, which is the new fifty-unit apartment building being built by Foothills Regional Housing, they provided a parking study that had been completed by Shopworks Architecture and Fox Tuttle Transportation Group, which basically said that we, as cities, are requiring way more parking than is actually used by affordable housing residents. And there were some conclusions drawn from that, but essentially, the closer you are to walking, transit, or biking resources, that deeply impacts the need to own a vehicle. And so, for example, in
Item number two, these are deed restricted affordable housing parking requirements.
Scott again? Yep. Yep, Scott.
All right. Just finished writing my last thought there. All right. So this is a different topic. We also talked about on February 6th, where City Council gave us direction to return with more information regarding recommended updates to parking requirements for deed restricted affordable dwelling units to align with recommendations in the Affordable Housing Strategy. And since then, this memo has additional research to accompany the recommendations at the direction of City Council. So we wanted to take a bit of a deeper dive into some of the parking utilization rates of deed restricted affordable housing. The first recommendation in the Affordable Housing Strategy that is moving forward to council, I believe on May 8th, is the Parkland Fee Reduction. Planning Commission unanimously recommended that that get approved. So you will see that pretty soon. And then this is the second on the list. So they do follow recommendations within the adopted Affordable Housing Strategy to reduce minimum parking requirements for deed restricted affordable housing, specifically in mixed-use zones, transit-oriented developments, and some other high-density residential zoning. And this also, again, aligns with recommendations from the American Planning Association, which in 2022 adopted the Equity in Zoning Policy Guide. So below, I did provide some quotes from the policy guide, which does recommend to reduce or remove parking requirements for affordable housing. And specifically, this is deed restricted affordable housing. This is not market rate housing. This wouldn't apply to a market rate development or even workforce. This is deed restricted based on income below a certain AMI, area median income. And the adopted Affordable Housing Strategy also has a direct quote that's saying, that says, "Parking represents a development cost, and in areas exempted from the charter's limits on density, parking can be an inefficient use of land that reduces a project's capacity to lower land cost per unit." So when staff was reviewing the Ives Building, which is the new 50-unit apartment building being built by Foothills Regional Housing, they provided a parking study that had been completed by Shopworks Architecture and Fox Tuttle Transportation Group, which basically said that we, as cities, are requiring way more parking than is actually used by affordable housing residents. And there were some conclusions drawn from that, but essentially, the closer you are to walking, transit, or biking resources, that deeply impacts the need to own a vehicle. And so, for example, an apartment building located next to a grocery store, next to a train station, has a lot lower parking utilization than a parking, something that's just built out in the suburbs with no connections. Hundreds of parking spaces for affordable housing units go unused across the Front Range. And there's really an average utilization of not even one space per unit, but .29 vehicles per unit across affordable housing properties on the Front Range. This is obviously a study. There's case studies that have multiple buildings. It's not all-inclusive, but RTD came to a similar conclusion of .36. So that's still really low. That means that if we required one parking space per apartment, 60% of parking spaces would go unused at all times. We recently learned that a lot of communities in Colorado have already reduced parking requirements for deed restricted affordable housing. Fifteen have been identified as already doing that, and 24 more were pursuing reductions within the next two years. So it's not just Denver and Boulder, it's a lot of other communities, including rural communities and suburbs. Denver did reduce their parking requirements. I provided that table in the memo as an example. Their proposal is a bit complicated because it's based on income, it's based on location, and it's based on zoning. So our recommendation is really a more simplified approach. Littleton recently reduced parking requirements pretty significantly. And same with Fort Collins. And on a national level, there's been some statewide legislation. There's also been some other peer communities, inner-ring suburbs of Portland, Minneapolis, Milwaukee, the Bay Area, that have done the same thing. And Wheat Ridge is really a peer city in those regards. So based on that recommenda, or sorry, based on that research and based on peer communities and what other folks are doing, we are recommending, recommending a reduction in the parking requirements for deed restricted affordable housing. Taking a three-tiered approach, the lowest requirements would be for those at the TOD area, within a quarter mile of a fixed guideway transit station, down to .25 spaces per unit or one space per unit maximum. Within our mixed-use zone districts, which is Wadsworth, 38th Avenue, some of Kipling, reducing that requirement to .5 spaces per unit minimum or 1.5 spaces maximum. And then multi-unit projects within the R3 Zone District, reducing from one and a half to two spaces per unit to about .75 to one space per unit, depending on bedrooms. Those recommendations would only affect units that are deed restricted and income restricted. They wouldn't affect existing requirements for accessible parking, which is required by state and federal law. Wouldn't affect requirements for designated loading areas, and it wouldn't remove the allowance for staff to ask for onsite guest and loading spaces. We recognize that not all sites are the same, not all sites have adjacent on-street parking. And in those instances, we have and continue to, will recommend that there's additional guest parking onsite, and the code allows us to do that. We really, at this point, are trying to defer a lot of this to the affordable housing providers. Foothills is really an expert in building and developing deed restricted affordable housing projects, and they best understand their demand. They're going to build what they need to lease up the buildings. And so allowing a more market-based approach and relying on the experts of APA and Foothills, the city can really help reduce burdens on building affordable housing. So we are seeking recommendation and direction on the proposed requirements on page three, namely, the proposal to require parking for deed restricted affordable units at a rate of .25 to .75 spaces per unit, depending on the context. Thanks.
Thanks for that presentation. And thanks for answering some of the things we brought up and asked. I'm just trying to get my brain around, what does it look like if you have some units in a, in a building of, of other market rate? Does that make sense? Like, what does that look like?
Yeah. So in that case, we would do essentially separate parking calculations. They would let us know how many units are going to be deed restricted, and the lower parking requirement would apply to those. And then we would assess the standard parking requirement to the regular units. So those two would add up then to the total required.
So, so if, if, if I am one of those participants in a lower-income opportunity, will I have less parking available than my person next door to me who's paying market rate?
That would be up to, at that point, the landlord. We don't get involved in that.
Okay. Does anybody know how that has worked in other places? Or? I was just curious. It might be a way to identify people, and I just was curious how the law kind of looks at that. Do you have any?
I don't. I would hope that no developer would differentiate, but I mean, I suppose there's always that.
Yeah. I was just, yeah. Just curious as I was thinking about it.
Yeah, it's a good question. I haven't heard anything. Lauren, did?
I was just going to say, I mean, so federal fair housing laws sort of disallow you to identify who's, who's who in a project. You know, and we could, we do that calculation similarly for like a mixed-use building. We'll do one calc for office and one calc for retail. We, we don't have to disaggregate that until the final documents, so that can be sort of a working calculation, but it doesn't get advertised. And we can certainly ask that question of others that haven't heard that come up. Fruitdale is maybe one example, not, not one where we did a different parking calc for the five deed restricted units compared to the other units in Fruitdale. It just sort of all gets pooled together, and they don't assign parking stalls that I'm aware of. But yeah, it's a good, it's a good point.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I, as I understand it, our community, our parking requirements are already pretty high compared to our neighboring communities. Is that true? I think that's fair to say. They're higher.
I think so, yeah.
So I support this for deed restricted. I also support maybe eventually coming back and looking at our parking requirements in general. And one thing I just wanted to ask is, you know, when we, like, let's say, the apartments, the 38th Avenue apartments, so they have a garage, right? So they had required parking or whatever. They have a garage, but you have to pay to utilize the garage. And so oftentimes, what we see is people not paying and parking on the street. Is there any way that we can require builders to not charge for the garage? So like, if, if the parking requirement's reduced, then you cannot charge for your garage?
I don't know that that's, that's something you typically see in the zoning code, that we can certainly look at it. I know when we had that issue, similarly, it was happening at Lucky's. People were parking in the surface lot inside the building. And we asked, is your parking bundled into your rent or is it an add-on item? Because when it's, you can get the same amount of money if you just say your rent is $100 more or whatever it is. We get different answers depending on who we've asked. I don't think that was the case until the property management changed at West End, so that may have been their choice. I've not seen it in a zoning code, but to your point, we didn't look sort of more comprehensively at parking requirements, and we can look at that too.
Great, thanks. Well, as, as it sits here, I support this for the deed restricted.
Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I do support what you're recommending for the deed restricted. And my thought on the, the off-street parking is that it's a, it's a big issue everywhere. And I often see people in my neighborhood that have, you know, they, they understand they can park in the street, and so they take their garage out and they make it into another bedroom. You know, until, there's some thought that until, you know, we, we change that somehow, you know, and I don't, I don't, we're nowhere near that, and you start having, you know, a two-hour parking limit like Denver does, that's the lowest hanging fruit is to, to park in the street right now. And I do know that, working with developers, that the garages are always a premium because they can get the premium. And people will always, you know, depending on their economic status, they'll, they'll park where they can. But I do support the city service. I think this is a good step forward. I do have, just, I don't want to go too far down in the weeds, but I'm just curious about the, what is the, the deed? I guess if you could just give me like a, as far as deed restricted, like, what is that parameter? What does that look like? Is that something that the city set? Is that something that our consultants set? Here's the, the verbiage of that deed restricted. And I'm not trying to, I don't want to tie up council's time, but I'm just kind of curious if you had an answer for that.
So the deed restriction component usually comes from whomever is sort of financing the project. So CHAF, Colorado Housing Finance Authority, when they are contributing low-income housing tax credits, they will be the ones who underwrite that, that deed restriction essentially. It happens that HUD will do that too. So Fruitdale received home funds, which were administered through the county. So Jefferson County and HUD had to approve that deed restriction. So we would only be writing that deed restriction if we were the ones sort of creating it by, you know, and that may happen in the future. If we do this housing preservation program, we offer money from our housing fund and say in exchange for deed restriction, we would be in that business too. But at this stage, for the purpose of this requirement, they would just need to show us that they've gotten a deed restriction through one of those other entities until we enter that game. We won't be writing them.
And the reason I bring that up, because I was looking at an article by Town and Mountain Village, and they took away the, the income cap, and what they based it on was the number of hours worked, and you had to be within that school district. And so what they're looking for is a specific, there's a program I can send to Patrick, but I thought it was interesting because what they're doing is they're saying like, hey, we want people that are working in our school district full-time. And so we're gonna, you'll be able to apply to this deed restriction. So that's what I was asking that question.
Additional questions or comments? Councilor Dozeman? Oh, excuse me. I, Councilor Stites had his hand up first, and I'll get you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just, I'll keep it simple. I, I like these recommendations here. To clarify, we are, there's still a requirement, they have some sort of guest parking though, right?
Yes. Whether a specific number or something that we can request based on context.
Okay. Because that's, I mean, I, I think it's one thing when, you know, the one person with the car or whatever parks it there, but when you fill up that parking lot and then everybody's spilling over into the neighborhoods consistently every weekend for every kid's birthday party or whatever, that's, I think that annoys the neighbors quite a bit. But I think these recommendations make a lot of sense, and I, I think we should move forward with those. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So for the parking utilization study, did they account for and remove, like, deed restricted affordable senior housing? Because, you know, seniors that don't drive clearly wouldn't need as many cars. So were they kind of held separately in the study?
That is a good question. Yeah, so they actually had, I think, three different categories. There was like senior housing, which actually has much lower, and then there was permanently supportive, so very low AMI, zero to 30%. That was like one in 12 residents have a car. A lot of cities already have lower requirements for senior parking. That's not something we put in here specifically because we wanted to keep it simple. But yeah, there's, there were kind of three categories.
Okay, that helps a lot. Thank you. I'm generally in, in support of this. I, I think, you know, although we have probably the biggest complaints about parking and speeding, especially with new development, I think the studies speak for themselves. And with our affordable strategy action plan, I think that this really falls in line with that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. So yeah, I'm very much in support of this. And to Ms. Hoppe's point, I, at some point, would be interested in taking a look at our other parking requirements around transit and our mixed use. And I think this is just a great example of our staff doing a great job of leading with like our big initiatives around affordability and removing barriers and putting into action other, you know, important priorities that we've set. So definitely support this. And I know it's coming forward at some point, but to me, this also goes in line with looking at what bike parking looks like, increasing, you know, you'll hear it from me again, we're learning a lot of people are substituting car ownership with transit and riding bikes and making sure that we've got safe storage and for, for those bikes. Thanks.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you so much. I also, I do support this. Going back to what Councilor Ohm said, however, I think is also worth notifying when creating some sort of conversation with the community about the fact that the expectation is that most of their vehicles will be stored on their property and, and that they don't necessarily own the parking spot in front of their house, and that's public parking. And I think that is a very misunderstood thing in, in Wheat Ridge, that, that you don't own the parking spot in front of your house. And I think there just needs to be some education around that. At least I would appreciate that because it's, it's a tough conversation. I know Councilor Stites and I have, have dealt with it in terms of some of the group home issues and having that conversation of how parking is shared on a street. It's kind of like the previous conversation about, about the public hearings and sort of, we have to start with what the law is and, and go from there. So I would very much appreciate some education around, as, certainly as we're dealing with density around Wheat Ridge and we're creating more housing, we have to talk about the conversation of parking.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments on this item before we go to a consensus? Councilor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Caesar Square, is that, that's the affordable housing?
Yes.
Well, all you have to do is go down the street, and it's loaded with cars, you know? And people are going, not every place has driveways. So at their houses or whatever, so where are they supposed to park? But also, they might have more than two or three cars, depending how many people live in the house, you know? So parking on the street, that's not a big issue about where, where I am, and I really appreciate that. But I did, I know that it is in different places, but to think that people who are going to be in affordable housing or even seniors or whatever don't have cars, no, they do. And they'll find a place, you know? Like even at 38th and Uppam, they park in the school parking lot. So they, they just find a place, you know, and they're going to park there. And also, it's very important to have guest parking. Because if you're going to have a place that's got 50 apartments and you've got three spaces for guests, then the guests are going to be all over on the streets too, you know? So that's important to have that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional discussion before we go to a consensus? Seeing none, all in favor of the recommendations outlined on page three, I guess, consensus on that? Looks like we do. Okay. Anything else on this item before we move to the next one? Okay, we're not going to, we're not going to cut to commercial quite yet, but we'll go to agenda item number three. This is updating requirements for childcare facilities.
I'll maybe just give a quick blurb, because this one admittedly is new. We did not talk about this topic in February. But it is coming to you because we knew we'd be here and we want to geek out on code, and because frankly, we've gotten a few inquiries over the last several months, maybe even couple of years, regarding childcare, where we had to say no, and it was like a gut check moment for our team of like this, we've said no a lot to things that feel like they might actually be appropriate. And when it most recently came in, we kind of just settled up and said, we're touching a lot of pieces of the code. Let's just throw them another topic and see how it goes. It's, we had actually some of these maps from years ago when we had some gut check moments with the restricted commercial zone districts. So thank you for indulging this new topic. And I'll let Scott go ahead and, and describe what pattern we've been seeing.
Yeah, thanks, Lauren. That's a really good context. We have gotten a lot of inquiries in the past couple of years about childcare. I think it's probably one of the biggest requests that we get maybe, in terms of people wanting to open and then realizing they can't in a certain location. So we, we recognize that there's a major lack of childcare, and this was actually recognized as well, bless you, in House Bill 211222, which was passed in June 2021. And one of the things that the legislature recognized was that zoning codes can actually present a big barrier to entering the childcare market. We didn't really have the capacity to explore code updates at this time. We're going to try to do it now. So we have a little bit of background in our code. We have two types of childcare facilities. One is a daycare home where the operator lives on site, and those are really found in actual homes. And then a daycare center, which is really more commercial in nature. So the memo describes kind of the different types of daycare centers. There's a large daycare center, there's a small daycare center, large daycare home and a small daycare home, and there's different numbers associated with it. The biggest thing that we've realized is that daycare centers, which are the commercial style, where no one lives on site, but you know, anywhere from 16 to plus children are there during the day, is that they're prohibited in two of our commercial zone districts. And that is what the first topic in memo is, which is daycare centers in commercial zones. So we've got two commercial zones in the city. So we've got two commercial zones in the city that do not currently allow daycare, the Restricted Commercial or RC Zone District and the NC Neighborhood Commercial Zone District. These were established with the original zoning code inherited from Jefferson County in 1972 and really have not changed since then. That's 51 years. They're located primarily on commercial corridors or collector roads, 44th Avenue, Kipling, Harlan and portions of 32nd Avenue. They're not located in areas of the highest intensity of development and they're really intended to be lower intensity zone districts than the standard C1 Zone District, but they still do allow for some commercial uses, including neighborhood oriented services. But despite this, for some reason, RC and NC both prohibit daycare centers of any size. We believe that these sites have often an optimal location, size and configuration to accommodate childcare facilities and we get a decent amount of requests about these locations. They're often located near residential areas, but still on collector or arterial streets. They're not embedded in neighborhoods and they often include a converted house or a small commercial building or even vacant lots. Because of this, we are recommending the zoning code be amended such that large and small daycare centers are permitted in both the RC and NC zones. One of the options that we have done in the past is allow rezoning to mixed use neighborhood, the MUN Zone District where daycares are permitted. And that's viable for some of these properties where they're on a really busy street or already in a heavily commercial area, but we recognize it's not appropriate in all cases. And this is really where an RC or NC zone is next to a neighborhood and we don't feel it's appropriate location for high density residential. So for example, 32nd and Wadsworth was one where there was a townhome development proposed that was denied by council. MUN staff felt was not an appropriate option just because MUN also allows a lot of other uses, drive-throughs, apartment buildings. So it's a solution for some of these cases, but not all of them. And so one of the options would just be to allow daycares in RC and NC and then we can kind of decide whether rezoning is appropriate or not. The map included shows where all of the RC and NC zones are in the city. This map's from 2016, so a couple of those have actually been rezoned to MUN, but you can kind of see they really are located on these kind of first and secondary commercial corridors, Harlan, 44th, Wadsworth and Kipling. We're really not sure why childcare facilities are prohibited in NC and RC. There's really no evidence in the zoning code to explain why. And RC and NC allow arguably more intensive uses like public schools, government facilities, convenience stores. It just doesn't make a lot of sense to us why they're not allowed. So one of the questions we have for council is if you all agree with our recommendation to allow daycare centers in RC and NC? And maybe I'll put a pause there so we can talk about that topic first.
Thank you for that presentation. My first question was gonna be, why didn't we do that? But the question that I had was, for some reason on Planning Commission, I think I remember a conversation about, not about childcare, but about the commercial and do childcare also have restrictions per where marijuana is sold, like schools or anything like that that we also have to be aware of that's gonna kick? Because I know that where we allow marijuana to be sold, those are only commercial zoning, correct? I thought I remembered that.
Yeah, it's commercial and industrial. It's a good question because there are land uses like marijuana related uses where new marijuana related uses have to be separated from a variety of things, including childcare centers. So if a code amendment were to create more eligibility for childcare centers, it doesn't work in the reverse where an existing business gets displaced. It just means that in the future, if for some reason we ended up with a new marijuana license, we would have to sort of pull this new report on whomever.
So it doesn't affect the five places?
Doesn't affect the existing. They may become legally non-conforming and that's okay. It means they couldn't expand, but it wouldn't change their existing status.
And most of these, RC and NC are located really far away from where those uses are already allowed. So I don't think there would be a pretty big impact.
Great, great. Well, I support this. Thanks.
Councilor Hutchinson?
Thank you. So there's quite a few daycares in churches. And so from what I was reading, it's okay if it's in a church, but like, you know, nobody's living there or whatever like that. But then if the church isn't a church anymore, which is like Wheat Ridge United Methodist, it's now a band place or music place, weren't they having childcare there still?
Don't actually know. Do you know?
No, I don't know if they had, if they, not to our knowledge, in terms of childcare is allowed as accessory use to a church. It's treated differently when it's the primary use, like during the week in a church, which is a topic we want to talk about as well in a moment because we've got a map on that and more observations. I don't know specifically about the Methodist Church.
Because I know there's a church at 29th and Kendall that also had childcare. I mean, those are wonderful places, you know? I had five grandkids go to Wheat Ridge Methodist preschool and stuff and for a very long time. So I think they're good and even though they are by traffic and things like that, they're really watched very well and we need more daycare. We need more childcare and things, so, you know, I know even Stevens Elementary had a preschool in there. So I'm all for as much childcare as we can get for the kids that are out there that isn't going to be so expensive. Like that's why a lot of people are working at home now that can't afford childcare.
Thank you. Councilor Nosler Beck?
I just also want to make sure that, I'm in full support of this. I think more options make it potentially more affordable and I'm very into that. And we have expanded quite a few childcare facilities in Wheat Ridge since I've been on council, so that's great to see. I just want to bring up something though that kind of ties back to our parking conversation. If we're going to be in some of these areas that are more neighbor-hoody with childcare facilities, one of the craziest times in any family's life is drop off and pickup times from childcare, no matter the ages. And I think that that should maybe also be in consideration for, if we're looking at this, what is the parking situation for these facilities? Because you have a lot of young kids, families and then people who are potentially not paying attention to that at all. So that's it. Thanks. And I'm in full support of the recommendations.
Thank you. Councilor Oom?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I had was, could you tell me about this very large restricted commercial that is, it's on Kipling, north of the rec center and across the street that appears to be in the floodplain?
I think that's part of the Clear Creek Open Space. I think it's city-owned.
So it's owned that, but obviously there could never be anything built, right?
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with these recommendations. I've had a childcare license through COVID. We had childcare going on at the karate school. It's incredibly difficult to get and maintain a childcare license just in general. So it's something that you have to have, all the sprinklers, all the stuff and bells and whistles on your units. So we're introducing a much safer brand of retail, I guess, into that area. So I think that, and these are exactly where you want to have them, kind of looking at these maps, these are like right out of neighborhoods and right on small collector streets and things like that. That's exactly where you'd want a daycare center. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to say that I support this first piece that we're talking about. I'll also be supporting the second piece when we go to talk about it. And then just to Councilwoman Nosler Beck's point, I guess the good thing about childcare is that it's not a, the bell doesn't ring at a certain time, but you're right, school drop off and pickup zones are, they're crazy for your whole life. I'm in high school still, so, and not until your own kids are driving. You'll be there forever. But the only thing that I was wondering about the, like the, kind of the neighborhood commercial and, or like, you know, when we make the changes, so if there already is a retail, like Councilwoman Weaver brought up, if there is already like a retail marijuana store or liquor stores have boundaries to, if it's already there, then would we allow the childcare facility to go in?
Yes, yeah. So there's nothing that precludes them from looking at the landscape and saying, I see what's here, but I choose to move there.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks.
Additional discussion before we, Councilor Nosler Beck?
This will be for the second item two that I think we're gonna talk about, but I just wanted to recommend that as we're going through this, that we reach out to Colorado's Statewide Parent Coalition that was the lead on the bill that you referenced before, Scott, in 2021 and just talk to them about things that could make it more accessible to open up more and find more areas. I can provide you with a contact for them.
Additional discussion before we try to generate some consensus? Okay, looks like what, we've got several questions. The first one I'm looking is, does council agree with staff's recommendations to allow daycare centers in NC and RC zones? Looks like we do there. Another one, does council agree with staff's recommendations to align the definitions of childcare centers with state requirements? Consensus there? Looks like we do. And I found another one on page, looks like we've got another one and maybe I'm missing some. Okay, Scott wants to, okay?
Yeah, I wanted to pause after the first two and then explain the third one.
Excellent.
Yeah, the second recommendation is really just cleaning up our definitions because they don't align with state. We're actually finding that that's not the only thing, but in order to keep things simple tonight, we're just focused on daycares. So the last recommendation, Councilwoman Hutchinson started to talk about this, was daycares in places of worship. So, and this is something that if we don't get consensus tonight, we can always bring back, but if we do, we can just include in the rest of the code amendment. And we do have a lot of places of worship that are located in residential zone districts and that was the second map. So they're kind of evenly distributed across the city. Again, they tend to be on busier streets, but not always. And right now, our zone district regulations allow daycare centers to operate as an ancillary use, which means a secondary use within the site's primary structure. So a daycare couldn't operate on a property within a church in a separate building. It has to be contained within the main building and it has to be secondary in nature to the worship use. What we're finding though, is that a lot of churches are closing or trying to repurpose their properties and they're really trying to find ways to either monetize or still be able to lease out their space if they're not holding services anymore. Right now, a daycare wishing to be a primary use of a worship building where the daycare is there more than the church, so maybe they only have service one day a week, but the daycare is there five days a week. We've interpreted the code to mean that that requires a special use permit, but the way the code is written for, we're not, again, totally sure why, if religious services are never held or the property is vacant, then a daycare center on its own is not allowed. So basically it has to either be a place of worship or vacant. Or in some cases, it could be redeveloped into residential if it has the appropriate zoning, but churches are really reaching out to the city to find potential uses for their property. And because of this, and also those buildings are already set up in a lot of times for childcare or school facilities, there might be a private school. We are recommending a change to the use charts to allow that daycare centers could operate as a primary use on these properties in a residential zone with approval of a special use permit without the need for an active congregation. They'll allow daycares to repurpose these existing buildings. The reason why we're recommending a special use permit, which is not a guaranteed approval, is just because we do recognize these are in low density residential neighborhoods, probably would have more impacts than an NC or RC property, which is on a corridor. And then the other recommendation we're making is that a daycare center can operate as a permitted primary use on a property with an active religious congregation as a secondary use. So that's kind of what we've already interpreted, but in that instance, we're saying no special use permit needed anymore.
I am in full support of this and I think this is a great, great opportunity. And just to Councilor Nosler Beck's point, churches often have pretty large off-street parking, drive-in, drop-off kind of, they're kind of set up for this perfectly. My question would be, they do not, they will have to succumb to the same safety standards, however, yes?
Yeah, any daycare facility would have to meet those separate licensing requirements. And so we have seen some, in fact, the, there was a church on Midtown Montessori had to do some extensive remodel work inside that church to repurpose it and that may have to happen, but at least the zoning hurdle is lower.
And my last question is, would this be in any sort of conflict with churches who are helping with the wintertime homeless? I would just want to make sure that all of these uses can be used.
It shouldn't because we had a meeting last week with Weather Network and the church for the northern region is gonna be the glory of God on 38th Avenue, right? And they do provide childcare during the day, I believe, so they're gonna have both uses.
Great, great. Thank you.
Councilor Holtein?
Thank you. Can you help me understand, so, first of all, I fully support this and I think it's wonderful to both help serve our churches and provide more daycare. So how would this work with the primary and secondary use, using your definition of how much it's used? So like St. James Episcopal in my neighborhood at 44th and Brentwood, they have worship services on Wednesday at noon and Sunday mornings. Like that's pretty much, you know, and then I see cars in the parking lot occasionally, but happen to know for a fact like those are their two worship services? Like how does that balance with like primary and secondary use? Because really they're only using the building two days a week for worship. Like would that be impacted by this?
I don't think it would be impacted. I think it would make it easier for that condition to exist. Right now, that technically probably would require a special use permit. We're not going out and actively enforcing on churches providing childcare. But I think, I'm trying to think of a real world example where they were like, we're only gonna have church one day a week, but we have childcare five days a week and we are gonna use the whole building and we're gonna use the entire site for childcare. Like that felt like that rose to the level of needing a special use permit, whereas if it's like part of the building or wing of the building or something, it's really arbitrary. So I think part of this is trying to remove some of that arbitrariness.
Yeah, we use some discretion on both sort of the frequency and the physical space and if things were in a separate building. We had somebody want to build a childcare building separate from the church building. We said that's primary, we can't actually do that. So we've used a few different things as we've considered this in the past.
And now that would be allowed, but with a special use permit because we recognize that building, a new building on a church property is more impactful than using the existing building.
So with something like this, should we reach consensus on this? Does the city like reach out to the churches to let them know this has changed since you've been, I mean, it's a fairly limited number of properties and you've heard from several of them and I think this would be good information for them to receive.
Yeah, we certainly could.
We've been in active contact with at least two that have asked about this probably in the past couple of years, but I'm sure there's more.
Yeah, I think it would be great to mail them a letter and assuming we reach consensus and let them know that that standard's changed.
We still are trying to build our faith-based coalition through the police department, so we have a relationship with most of the churches, so we can definitely reach out to all of them, but bring it up at their next meeting too.
Thank you. Councilor Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think these are good recommendations. I do like the special use permit for that as well, just because you're bringing in a lot of traffic on days that aren't, I guess, days that you wouldn't expect to have it if you were just by a church. My son went to Child Priority last year, which is right across the street from Colorado. My son went to Child Priority last year, which is right across the street from Coleridge and the back of the church there, and it's fantastic, the way they have it kind of set up. And I think it probably keeps the church in business, just judging by when I drive by on Sundays, that there's just not a whole lot of use for a lot of these churches around. But we definitely have a use for daycare centers and stuff. And as long as they have to get their own permitting, and they have to make sure that all those facilities are up to code and all that stuff for that, I think this is a great use. So thank you.
Great. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm in support of this. I think this will be something good for the community, because right now, we're looking at empty parking lots. Sometimes I hear in my district about, you know, there's maybe people messing around in the back of the church because nobody's there, so this will just kind of keep that space energized, and I think it'll give more tie-in, buy-in with the the community, because, you know, the kids will go to that daycare, and so people will be looking out for it better. So I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also agree with this. I think it is a good way to activate some low-used properties in our community. One thing about special use permit, oh, gosh, I think it's been several years now, maybe three years ago, I brought forward some changes for our special use permit process, which meant that one of the criteria was that if there was an area plan in place, that the special use, the person who's applying for the special use, that special use has to be aligned with that area plan. But I just, and and I just want to also bring up to you is that special use permits don't necessarily have to be approved, right? So if it comes to us and we don't feel like it's appropriate, then we have the opportunity to say we don't feel like this is appropriate here. But Lauren, can you remind us just a few other things that are on a special use permit?
The criteria?
Yeah.
For review? Yeah, it's a good point. An SEP is discretionary, and essentially, it means that this land use may or may not be appropriate, depending on the location, the context, and the operational characteristics. So some of the criteria relate to impacts, traffic and utility impacts, code enforcement history, compliance with comp plan and other adopted plans. There's like nine criteria, probably missing several, character, the impact of the character of the area, compliance with the architectural and site design manual. It's actually more criteria than for a zone change, and the process is a neighborhood meeting first, and then an application, a public posting period. If we, if staff believes it meets the criteria, and if there are no valid objections, then it can be approved administratively. If we've got an issue with their operation that's not compliant with the criteria, or if we get an objection during that posting period, and it's sort of a legitimate complaint, not just like, you know, you have brown hair and I'm not happy, it would go to council. And you've had a couple of those over the years. It's infrequent, but it is possible. Yeah.
And the SEP also allows staff to evaluate things like site planning and parking, circulation, all that good stuff. So it's not just getting approved. We actually look into all the traffic considerations as well.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. One other question I'll throw at you is, what is the, and this is kind of, I guess, for staff, is what does the city do for, in special situations for like unaccompanied high school students? You know, where they're, they they don't have a home, they want to go somewhere, they don't have someone to kind of speak for them, and they might want some type of housing. Would, not in all circumstances, but would that ever be a consideration for a church to say, you know what, we're gonna, we're gonna have some adults here to kind of help these high school students and provide some shelter? Not schooling, per se, but, you know, some type of shelter, and maybe it's some type, some type of work, housing.
There, I'm not familiar with the exact factor pattern, but we do have a land use category for group home for children. The property at Thirty-Second and Kipling was historically a group home for children, people under eighteen. I don't know that we have any others currently in the community.
No, not that I'm aware of. And, Mr. Ohm, you're speaking about kids who are actually experiencing homelessness, not just need a place to go after school. Correct. Yep. And I'm thinking, since we're talking about churches, would that ever come up?
Yeah, if that's a, if that would be a allowed use in a church, maybe? Is your question?
Group homes for children are permitted use with eight or fewer residents in all residential zone districts. I don't know what the licensing process looks like from the state. And for churches, I think there's, you know, we've gone through this a little bit with the severe weather network of like, there's permanent residential occupancies, which requires certain things in the building code, and then temporary. So it is, it is a use that could be accommodated, I think, in both the zoning and the building codes in some way.
Additional questions or discussion on this item? Okay, so it does look like that staff is recommending on page four in the middle, changes to the use charts to accommodate the following, and I'll let you read those. Do we, do we have consensus to move that recommendation, those recommendations forward? We do. Okay. Check that one off.
Thank you.
Any additional, any additional work on item number three here that we need to?
That's it. Thank you.
Address? Okay. Thank you. Once again, thank you for the short synopses and or synopsi, I'm not sure what it is. But we appreciate it. So we'll go, let's see, we got one, two, three. Good. Staff reports. Mr. Goff.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. But first of all, thanks, Lauren and Scott. Great job on that. Thank you. Very productive discussion, counsel. Monday, next Monday, regular council meeting, you'll see on your your chair or at your chair is the Forty-Fourth Avenue Civilary Plan. Wanted to give you a few more extra days to to look at that. It's, most of it's the same that you saw a few months ago, but I think the action plan is the newest portion of it. So if you digested this fully the last time you saw it, just look at the action plan. That's the new, that's really how we want to implement this this plan. But we'll be asking you Monday, next Monday night, to adopt this as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan. So excited to take take that project off also. Speaking of the land use and zoning, as you all know, the Senate Bill twenty-three, two-thirteen is making its way through the legislature. We talked about it at council a couple of times. You approved a resolution in in opposition of the bill unless amended. We did send that off to Senator Dannison and Representative Duran, and also to the entire Senate Local Government Housing Committee, where the bill is being heard. There was over twelve hours of testimony on April sixth on this bill. Some potential amendments have been drafted. We're still trying to review those. The Local Government Housing Committee is going to take this up again tomorrow, eighteenth threads tomorrow. There won't be any further testimony on the bill, but they're going to consider amendments at this time. We expect, CML expects that there'll be, the bill's going to be heavily amended, but we don't truly know exactly what those amendments look like. We've seen, we've seen a list, a full list of amendments, but we're not sure what's actually going to get put into the bill. So CML still opposes the bill unless it takes out mandates on local governments. So we'll see where it goes. Anything to add to that? You've been pretty tied into that.
You know, it's just, it's sort of in the amendment process. We'll need to see what comes out of the committee hearings.
Yep, that's all I got.
Okay, that's all you got. We will then go to elected officials' reports. I'll start with my clerk in the back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At a regular council meeting sometime in May, I'll have a poll verbal report on the status of the referendum petition to reverse Order seventeen forty-four, a number which is now tattooed on the inside of my eye. And all the details. I don't think it will last longer than three or four minutes, and I can certainly do it during the elected officials' matters. There is one more deadline established by the district court. Basically, this Colorado law requires that the plaintiff, meaning the protesters against our determination that the petition was insufficient, must pay for the cost of recording all of the hearing that was held, and that cost is in excess of four thousand dollars because of the length of the hearing, and the time it will take a certified court reporter to do that work. We even offered to pay half of that cost, but we still haven't heard from the plaintiffs in that case what they plan to do. On the twenty-seventh of April, they must either pay the forty-two hundred dollars to the city, or the judge has ordered that their appeal will be dismissed summarily. So after that date has passed, I'll have more details. At this point, the lawyers are telling me, under no circumstances, whether they put up the four thousand dollars or they don't, do they have any basis for getting the court to reverse the decision Judge Basel made? So I don't see any any way that this petition is going to suddenly be declared sufficient. But at this point, we'll wait another week or two, and then I'll start with July eleventh last year and tell you what happened, contrary to what you may have heard elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Other elected officials' reports. Counselor Nosler Beck.
I'm just, I guess I'll do it at every meeting until we're past it, but Wilmore Davis is having their big last hurrah on May tenth from five to seven, so stop by if you are an alum or a community member, or just want to check in with everybody who's going through, going through the big goodbye to Wilmore Davis. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional elected officials' reports. Counselor Hutchinson. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, this Saturday is going to be a health fair at Arvada Community Church, fifty-five fifty-five Ward Road. I mean, it's really a great thing, you know, even if you have insurance and you just want to talk to somebody or, you know, gets blood pressure done, some labs done, whatever. It's great that they've started these up again. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Hulteen.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the update on House Bill two thirteen. Having been following some of the amendments coming forward, I won't really talk about the House bill, other than a lot of what it's trying to accomplish or things I think we're really leading with here. So I just want to recognize that, you know, there's, there's a good reason this House bill is up in front of our legislators this year, and it's creating quite the conversation. But I think really, the meat of it and the problems it's trying to address, I think we we are doing an exceptional job of in this community, and I'm really proud of that. So I just want to recognize, and I think this seated council is really responsible for a lot of that forward-thinking in terms of housing affordability and land use. So, so, you know, wherever two thirteen lands, we're, we're solving our problems in, I think, a really thoughtful way, and I just want to recognize both my colleagues and our staff's work on that.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
I just wanted to thank planning staff tonight for presenting what you did, and I really appreciate the last thing that we talked about regarding the churches, because I think that it also keeps a lot of form and shape in Wheat Ridge that that people really love from sort of mid-mod to to sort of later seventies architecture. And I think it's a great way of keeping some lovely open space in our community within residential neighborhoods. So thank you for for bringing that forward. Appreciate it. And and of course, the other things, too.
Additional elected officials' matters? Okay, let's see, we are back here a week from tonight at a regular meeting at six thirty P. M., and we also have a meeting scheduled with Representative Pedersen next Monday on the twenty-fourth at three P. M. here in your office. So if you're able to make it.
Let me know if anyone else is going to come. A few have reached out, but we need, we need a bigger room. Please let me know here if you haven't told me already if you're going to make it.
Is there any more business to be done tonight? All right. Thank you. We will stand adjourned. Have a good night.